Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing for the Warren County Fitness Center. And I think, Jack, you gonna walk us through that?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Board. This is a site plan approval request for the Warren County Fitness Center, SP 116. On June 8th, 2017, a request was filed for site plan approval for a proposed fitness center to be located at 3920 North Highway 47. Property is owned C2 General Commercial. Motion for approval passed six to zero with four absent at the July 6th, 2017 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. I'd like to ask to make part of the public hearing record the municipal code by reference, the planning and zoning report, and the public hearing notice.
I see we have a few people here from, if you all have any questions or anything on, or if there are any questions from the public. We have Dan Hampson and Hubie Kleisner here from the Warren County Commissioners.
What is the use of the building? Is this the building that Pillum built years ago, all the way up north?
Mr. Pillum?
Yes.
Please.
I think it's, my name is Walters.
Wait till you get to the mic, and please, now, please introduce.
Ruth Walters, Warren County Health Department.
Hubie Kleisner?
Hi, Hubie Kleisner, County Commission.
So, currently, it's vacant. I think it's been vacant for a number of years. And it was built, I guess, as a DFS office, and then they moved, I believe in 2002. And I think it's a great location for us.
And your use for the building is going to be?
Be a fitness center?
Fitness center.
But I think the definition of a fitness center is a little different than most of the folks that use that have a lot of birthdays.
Yeah, well, that's that. I just had one.
Congratulations. Yeah, watch that. I go to the one now, so.
The other thing I think I want to bring to all's attention is, we think, and this is just an estimate, that probably seventy percent of the clients are from the city of Warrenton.
Is the county purchasing this and doing the renovations on it?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so it's gonna be a county-owned?
It'll be a county-owned building, yes.
Northwood 47, the old DFS building.
Yes, yes.
Isabel on 47.
Okay.
Isabel on 47, okay.
Was there some issues with the parking lot? Didn't the parking lot hold water?
It does. That'll be fixed, but our initial was to add parking spaces, because those that attend the senior classes, twenty-four or better folks in the class, and I think the front was twenty-seven spaces, and we were adding another eight back and six or so on the side, but three of that would be for employees. I can tell you a little bit of history that we started in 2008 at the Extension Center, and we had two classes. And from there it grew. Stacy White, our health educator, wrote a grant, and we're in our fifth and final year of that grant. We were down on Main Street at the old Beauty College for about a year and a half. We outgrew that three thousand square feet, foot building, and now we're currently at the outlet mall. And it's a great location, but we know that our future's not there. So, this might be the right time to move. From the beginning, in 2012, I'm sorry, 13, we've seen right at twenty-eight thousand people in our program. That's visits, that's not folks, it's visits to our fitness center. And the majority, as Mike knows, there's seventy percent of them are seniors. And I know that there's a couple here that appreciate the program, and we do a lot of surveys and polls, and we kind of go with what they would like for us to do. So, still grant-funded. We're searching a couple other grants, and it's working, so.
How long do you think it will take from the time you get ready to move or actually start construction until it's ready to open up?
There are just a few things to do on the inside. One of it is the carpeting and do some wall changes, but right now, our lease is up December of 2017. We hope to start our new program, the new program in the new year, in January.
How many square feet is that facility?
Fifty-eight hundred square feet.
Wow.
So, if you are familiar with it, the front was all offices, and kind of an L shape, and what we're gonna do with that is use it for our equipment. And then the backside that was added on, I believe, I'm not, it's 1999 it was added on, and that is a big open space of twenty-two hundred square feet. So, what we want to do there is have our classes in the back. We have twelve instructors. They teach anything from Zumba, which, how it was started, to chair exercises. David, who's in the audience here, he's one of our instructors, and he has a big following. If we take one of those classes away, we hear about it. So, anyway.
No, he might have been in your class.
You have, okay. He'll work it, too, yeah.
Any other questions?
No.
Go ahead.
I'm glad that building's getting filled.
Yeah, me, too.
Yeah, I was gonna make a comment, too. When you started this, I think I talked about what a great thing it was. One thing we've learned by putting in a new swimming pool, architects talk to us, you know, we used to think of a swimming pool as for young kids, young families, but seniors, those with many birthdays, have a great role to play in how you design a new pool and how you look at that. So, it's addressing a need that's definitely in the community.
Part of our survey is, you know, what would you like to see us add? They want us to add a pool. Well, no, I'm not doing that, but anyway, sometimes at the outlet mall, we do have a little swimming area, but we're good, yeah.
I just echo what Alderman Schultz said. It's great to see, great to see that building put to use, and I want to thank you for your investment and the humanity.
One thing I do want to add, we did a little research there. There's two-hundred-and-eighty-four homes in Andorra Estates and around that, on that side of the highway. And young families, those with kids, we wanted to add some children's programs, and walking to the facility was a big part of what we had looked at, and just one of the things that I think will work for us, so.
Thank you.
Any questions from the public? Okay, at this time, then, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ruth.
At this time, I'll close the public hearing on the Warren County Fitness Center. And I guess I, by way of explanation, I need to probably explain why I'm running the meeting tonight. I'm president of the board. Our mayor, Eric Schluter, is in the hospital. He's diverticulitis, I think is how they, what they call it, so he looks to get out maybe by Thursday. So, in his absence, I'm, that's why I'm running the meeting, so. Okay, I would like to, that being said, I would like to open the July 18th, 2017 meeting of the Warrenton Board of Aldermen, and I see we have the Boy Scouts here. We were blessed with their presence tonight, so I would like them to come forward here and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, if you would, please. Come on right up here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would you guys like to introduce yourself? Come up and introduce yourself real quick, and tell, come up here and tell us, I think, in the microphone there, come up and introduce yourself.
Then you go home and you two will watch your cell phone.
And I think you guys are working on merit badges, is that right? So, you can tell us.
Yeah.
It's all yours.
My name?
Yeah. Your name?
My name is Michael.
My name is Joshua.
My name's Caleb King, bro.
Yeah, Noah.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Glad to have you here. Good luck on your merit badge stuff. Okay, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
First item is the regular meeting minutes from June 20th, 2017. We have approval to hire Brittany Morris as cashier at twelve dollars an hour with a start date of July 10th, 2017, and then approval of the following sidewalk projects by the Public Works Department that are in the capital budget. The first one is Steinhagen Road from Veterans Memorial to the Car Wash, in the amount of one-thousand-five-hundred-thirty-seven dollars. The budget amount was one-thousand-six-hundred dollars. Second project is, sidewalk is Northeast Street from East Oak to the Alley, in the amount of one-thousand-five-hundred-thirty-seven dollars. Budget amount was one-thousand-six-hundred dollars. Next project is Arlington Way from the North Outer Road to Armory Road, in the amount of nine-thousand-twenty-seven dollars. Budget amount was nine-thousand-one-hundred dollars. And the last project is West Oak Street from Northwest Street to North Morgan Street, in the amount of four-thousand-twenty-five dollars. Budget amount was four-thousand-one-hundred dollars.
Thank you, Melody. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
So moved.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by John Miller, seconded by Scott Schultz. Roll call, vote.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shel Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero, or six to zero, excuse me. Next, we have the introduction of Kathleen Bells and Brittany Morris. Who will do those introductions?
This is Kathleen Bells, her newest records clerk in the Police Department.
Okay.
Nice to meet you.
This is Brittany Morris. She has been temping for us as cashier since March, and so we want to welcome her as our cashier.
Okay, welcome aboard ladies.
Nice to meet you ladies.
Thank you very much. At this time, we would open the meeting to hearing from the public. If you've got anything you'd like to bring up, we request that you keep your comments to five minutes. Otherwise, we would like you to request being on the future agenda, so. Any comments from the public?
Well, I may or may not make comments on 17B, or do we have to make comments now?
I think you're on the.
Fits on the agenda.
You're on the agenda, Mandy, you're on the agenda, so. Okay, hearing none. We'll move on. Any Board of Aldermen comments?
Do I have anything to say?
I'm gonna reserve.
Nothing here?
We got a lot of business to take care of tonight.
Okay. And since the mayor's not here, I have no comments as an Alderman or mayor, so no items removed. Next item on the agenda is a service agreement with the Barclage Company. That's in reference to the Better Roads Forward when we were with the toll road issue, and we had previously approved this. So, this basically is just, now that we have an agreement actually in place with Barclage, and Tara, you got anything else you want to add to that?
No, other than just to say that we will need approval tonight for execution of the agreement, which will then result in the payment going out later this week.
Okay.
And that contract is with Barclage?
Yes.
For services in regard to defeating the toll road proposal?
That's correct.
I'm obviously new to this board as of last meeting. I would like to request that we have a meeting in the future with both a Better Road Forward Committee and with the Barclage Firm. I am pleased that the toll road issue was defeated. I think we do ourselves a disservice, however, if in the interim, we don't start looking at ways to improve our interstate. I was on the interstate today between here and Wensville, and it's starting to fall apart. So, although I am not in favor of toll roads, I am in favor of finding additional funding so that our interstates can be improved, and I don't think we'll do that just by opposing the toll road issue. So, I'd be interested to hear what Better Road Forward Group has to say, and also what Barclage might have in regard to moving forward on that.
Move, I can't answer part of that, Alderman Costello is, because I sat in on a lot of the meetings with it. That's one of the reasons the name was changed to Better Road Forward. They are looking at funding options, and they are looking forward to working with MoDOT, hand-in-hand with MoDOT, to find alternate funding for the interstate. Because you're right, it's not something that can be just let go, their needs. So, along with Barclage, and Bart Corman, Brian Spencer, and Jeannie Riddle, they're all, even though they were involved in the fight to stop the interstate tolling from Forest Hill to Independence, moving forward, that's one of the things they are all looking at, is alternative funding for MoDOT. So, yeah, that would probably be entirely possible.
So, if no one is opposed, perhaps we could seek a meeting with them. A work session?
A work session. We can check on that.
I'm not sure when now, Better Road Forward, I think they're having, I'm not sure when their next meeting is. I missed the last one, because I was out of town, so.
Well, I don't desire to, you know, to go to their meeting. I'd like to have a work session to see what their thoughts are, because I was told by one of the members that they had six options, six things that they felt could be considered for funding and improving the interstate system in the future. I, for one, as both a citizen and now as serving in public again, would like to know and understand what those are, because my guess is that this board, or future board, is gonna be asked for additional funding. And I think that the better advised and informed we are, the easier that is for us, and then to justify that to the public for spending tax dollars in that effort.
The good thing is, we have a lobbying unit in place now, and I didn't mean that we should go to their meeting, but I mean, if I go to their meeting, I can ask them, and they would be able to get together. So, that's why I brought up for your next meeting.
Great.
But in the meantime, I would entertain a motion to go ahead and approve the agreement and make the payment to Barclage Company.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Alderman Costello, seconded by Alderman John Miller, to approve the agreement with Barclage Company and pay the amount of fifty-five-hundred dollars. Roll call, vote.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shel Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is an address change for the Shops of Warrenton.
We received a letter from Art King, who is with Raw Walters Properties, the developer out there, and the address out there is currently 1,000 Warrenton Outlet Center. It is not intended to be an outlet center in the future, so their request is to change that address to 1,000 Warrenton Shops, and then each suite would be followed by the suite number of those individual suites.
So essentially, we're just changing Outlet Center to Shops, but everything else, the suites are the same, everything's the same?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the address change for the Shops of Warrenton.
So moved.
Second. Who's first?
Just pick one. Everybody's seconded, I think.
Motion by Alderman Schultz, seconded by Alderman Costello.
I was the only one that didn't second.
I'm sorry. I think we're quiet. Alderman Ock. Okay, motion by Alderman Schultz, seconded by Alderman Ock, to change the address for the Shops of Warrenton from the Outlet Center to the Shops of Warrenton. Roll call, vote.
Alderman Shel Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Next item on the agenda is fireworks usage and discharge, and I think we have a Samantha Campbell present.
Yes.
Okay.
So, I know whenever.
Please, please, yeah, please go ahead and introduce yourself.
Yeah, I'm Samantha Campbell. I'm the City of Warrenton. I live over in Warrior Ridge, and I'm proposing fireworks use discharge amendment to Section 210-720. I know when this was originally brought up and approved by the board, that it was more of a test run to see how fireworks discharge on specifically the Fourth from 5:00 to 10:00 PM would pan out, and it also alleviated some law enforcement calls. I am proposing that we expand that, as some of our neighboring cities have. I know Truesdale allows just discharge from July 1st through July 10th from 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM. I had some mocked up, I guess, I mean, you guys are in charge, so you guys can make the rules, but I had mocked up that if, like, the Fourth would fall on a Monday or a Tuesday to allow discharge of fireworks from the Friday prior, 12:00 PM, so noon, to 11:00 PM through the Fourth at 11:00 PM at night. Or if the Fourth was to fall on a Wednesday, discharge of fireworks shall be allowed Wednesday, July 4th, through the Sunday following, July 8th, till midnight. And then discharge of fireworks on New Year's Day, just for a fifteen, twenty-minute window. I did fail to put on the agenda, which I had previously turned in, for fireworks to be discharged if the Fourth was to fall on a weekend, to allow it to start the Friday of, and then run through that Sunday, just because I know a lot of families, they work, so it's hard to celebrate the Fourth when you only have a five-hour opportunity. I, of course, I run a tent here in Town, well, actually in Truesdale, but it'll also benefit the community, because you'll be getting more sales tax money. So, that is what I propose.
I noticed in Lieutenant Ollers' report, he had a number of things on calls. Could you kind of give us an overview as to how you think it went this season? I mean, it looks like the calls are down seventy-seven in 2016 to twenty-six this year. Could you kind of give us an overview of how you felt that went?
That's about what it boils down to. Our calls dropped to, I think, twenty-six total, and we only had to issue five summons.
Good. Were there, I mean, do you think it was, do you think it's improving? Because you probably have some history from.
From years past, yes, it's improved.
Okay.
I mean, I can remember years past when I was a patrolman and had twenty-six fireworks calls stacked, but still needed to be responded to, so. Twenty-six total in a month is much better than years past.
Well, I don't have a problem with expanding it. Now, whether to go to your exact guidelines, I don't know. I think this is something that we probably need to discuss. Is it gonna be, we knew this would be a problem when we started the program in the infancy of it, just to get started, and when the Fourth obviously ends up on a Tuesday, that people do want to start celebrating on a Saturday and a Sunday with family events, and I don't have the exact combination to make this all work.
Right.
I am certainly in favor of expanding it from the Fourth. Whether I think it's a ten-day issue, I don't know. I think this is something that the board had to discuss before we can be, give you a definite, or have a definite answer for ten days or five days, or so on and so forth. I mean, that's just my feelings.
Yeah, I had a chance to review Truesdale's a little bit. They have a ten-day window, which I think is entirely a little bit too much, because if you had a family that's got from 9:00 AM till, I think theirs goes to 11:00 PM.
Correct.
For ten days in a row, you could be waking up to fireworks, and there's no enforcing that. So, you'd be waking up to kabooms and not getting to sleep with kabooms, and there's really nothing to enforce if it's allowed. And I think there's a little bit too much. I'm willing to expand it, too, depending on what day the Fourth falls on, but I haven't had a chance to actually look at a calendar and see what's gonna work best, but we could look at maybe expanding it a day or two here and there, depending on the weekend, or maybe breaking it up. I don't know if that would work either, if the Fourth fell on a Wednesday, if you could have it the Friday and Saturday before, and then the Wednesday, but not, I don't know, five days in a row or six days in a row would work either. I just, I just think there's a certain balance point where you're gonna try to please everybody in the public, and some people don't want to have their dogs peeing on the carpet every day at nine in the morning, and I think we tried it with just five hours, and I'm willing to expand it, but not, not to an extent to where we're gonna get more complaints because we opened up the window too much.
Right.
So, as far as your request goes, I think we've got at least a couple members here on the board that are willing to look at it, but that's something we would have to draft up and.
Yeah, and I'm not looking for a necessarily vote on it tonight, but just get the ball rolling.
Yeah.
I think that's a thing, this is something we've, we've heard different things from the public, so, and we've got a year, or at least eleven months, to play with and talk about it, but I do appreciate your, the options you've thrown out here. It gives us something to talk about, at least a starting point, everything.
There is another side to that. I happened to be in Ashland, Ashland Meadow subdivision for a barbecue evening that we allowed fireworks, and I swear, it was like a competition. In the home I was at, we left as soon as we could leave, they had seven-hundred dollars worth of fireworks that they were trying to try to set off in that short period of time. It was like warfare out there, so. I think there is a balance. I, too, have no idea what that might be, and it's gonna depend every year on how the Fourth falls, but it certainly, in my opinion, from this side of the board, and I don't know what the other two Aldermen feel, I think it bears some consideration. I think we'd want our Police Department to be involved in it, and perhaps the first thing you might do is a review of what other surrounding cities are doing, and what they think works in that apart.
I know, like you, I was in Wensville, and it seemed like down there, every housing development had cul-de-sac parties, and it was the same way. It was like a competition. You could watch it here, 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 all the way around, and it went on for, you said seven-hundred dollars, I'll bet you theirs was over a thousand.
One pound.
Well, that's the way this.
And there were four drones in the air.
Anyway, any other questions for Samantha?
No, I'm waiting there.
We thank you for bringing it to our attention, and we will be revisiting it before next year, and again, thanks for your work on this. It gives us some time.
Yes, we really appreciate it.
Anytime, and you guys have questions?
Anything you can bring the public in and bring us some more information, that's what it's all about. We appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is the Paint the Town Purple Relay for Life, Katie Rowan.
Good evening. My name is Katie Rowan, and I'm a committee member with the local Warren County Relay for Life, and a new member, actually, to paint the town purple, so I don't know a whole bunch about it, but I'm learning. So I don't know a whole bunch about it, but I'm learning. We're asking first and foremost if we can put up the purple ribbons on the light poles again this year for the month of August. Excuse me, I believe the Sunday before the first of August is the 31st, possibly. I'm not 100% sure on the dates, but we'd like to put them up the Sunday before the first, and have them remaining up for the remainder of August. Relay itself is actually on the 26th of August. And we would take them down the following Sunday of relay, either the following Sunday or Monday, due to the fact that there's other events that are on that following Sunday as well, not here in town. But there's actually a baseball game. So we may not have a bunch of our committee members who might be available for that. If they need to be taken down immediately, we would make those accommodations to get that done. And we're also asking to put the smaller signs back up that give information about relay as to when it's going to happen, where it's going to be in between the light poles. The other thing we are asking is, in preparation for next year, we would like to make an addition to the purple ribbons. We'd like to put some sort of lights on the poles as, like what's done with the white lights during Christmas time. Whatever lights would be best on the poles and however to put them up, we are more than willing to accommodate that as well. We know that the light poles are a wonderful addition to the community, and we don't want to damage them in any ways. But we would like to have preparation for that because we would have to do fundraisers in order to purchase the lights. So we would like to be able to tell everyone what the fundraisers are for. And then we would also like to, for lack of better terminology, have the public be able to adopt a pole. Excuse me. And by that, we would like to put up, like your smaller yard signs typically like what we've, be put up during election time, and have them in memory or in honor of. And people in the community would have the opportunity to purchase one of those signs. And we would like to, them to be put up in a grassy area, more specifically along 47, since the ones on Main Street are all on concrete. And it would be a uniform sign, except for the fact that whoever would adopt that pole, they would be able to decorate a portion of the sign how they wanted to. We are aware of the risk that they could be taken down, they could be damaged. And that would also be a disclosure when they are being purchased, is that, you know, there is a liability that the pole, or the signs could be taken down or damaged. And, excuse me. The committee members for Paint the Town Purple would be the ones to be putting the signs up. So it wouldn't just be people walking up to the poles and putting signs in the ground and all that. They would be uniform poles, and they would be put up at a certain time.
I know one of the things, the poles are actually on MoDOT right-of-way. So the city definitely cannot approve putting the signs on that. That would be something totally no-no for us.
Okay.
So as far as the lights, Brad, do you want to address the lighting issue? I know we've, it becomes quite a liability issue.
Yeah, and one of the liabilities is getting them up. My staff does not have time to do it, and I just have a real problem with other people on those lights. The downtown lights are around 5,000 apiece. The ones out on 47 are around 1,600 apiece. The problem is, you know, it takes, it's taken us quite a few years to perfect the way of doing it. You know, with the ladder, you've got to be somebody there to hold it, the wrapping, the plugging it in, then the maintenance on it. People don't realize that we're out there every morning when the lights are on fixing bulbs and stuff, because vandals come by, pull the bulb, pull this off. Last thing I would be worried about is if any of these, it depends on what kind of lights you're going to get, because the ones we are, commercial type, and the wires are very well coated, that's the thing. If any of this stuff is bare, touches the pole, got electrocuted, you know, somebody could get electrocuted. Hate to see you all have that. I just, I think the liability of you all putting them up on our poles and trying to keep them, myself, you know, we try to keep, we have bad enough problem with people hanging signs on them, you know, garage sale signs, they put duct tape, takes the finish off. Here we got a $1,500 pole with a, you know, where we had to take it off, and now we're down to bare metal. So I just, I'd rather let us do the lights during Christmas. And the ribbons, I have no problem with. The yard signs, however you all want to do that, I don't have any problem with it. But putting lights on the pole, I have a problem with that.
I would say, the people, when you do see political signs, other signs that are sitting in state right-of-way, Warrington does not remove those signs. If they're removed, generally, they're removed by the state.
Okay.
Because we've talked a lot about that over the history of signs being out there, and it is the state's right-of-way, and there's always been a discussion about, well, if somebody sticks a sign in the state's right-of-way and shouldn't be there, is it the city's responsibility to take it down? I think we've taken the position, no. I think the only time we would take something down is if we thought it was obstructing traffic or was a danger. So you put the signs up in the right-of-way at your own risk, because the highway department could take them down, they could ignore them, but the city tries to stay out of that whole area. So if you do see something out there, it's not that the person came to the city and said, can we put this help wanted sign, or whatever sign is, on this right-of-way? They just go ahead and do it. So the city's not involved, they're not part of it. So you kind of use your judgment on that.
I think, first of all, it's important to tell you what a good organization, I think, you represent, and I think you did a lot of good work. Run a further risk of having additional organizations that might, might not be of the same quality that, once we start allowing lights to be attached, there's probably no end to the requests we're going to get. So in the light of that, I would make a motion that we follow the maintenance supervisor's recommendation and continue to allow the ribbons to be attached to the light.
Motion, Costello, or motion?
Yeah, I can second that.
We have a motion by Alderman Costello, seconded by Alderman Ock to allow the placing of the ribbons as we have done on the light poles in the past, and...
From the, from the dates that she requested?
Yeah, we'll, we'll stay with those dates.
Okay.
Any other questions for Katie or anything? Okay, roll call vote?
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz-Harvey?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you, Katie, and I'll echo Mr. Costello's comments. You do have a great organization, and we'll try to support you any other way we can.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Terry Thorne, Director of Operations, Finance Officer.
Thank you. My first item for you this evening is change order number one for KCI Construction. This is the formal approval. We previously had board approval by email, vote to not to slow this project down. This is for clearing of right-of-way over at the new interchange location, so that Amren can start the work in order to stay on our time schedule of relocating the power poles over there. In fact, I think the contractor, Brandy told me, has already started on this work over there. So this change order is for $33,500.
We'll entertain a motion to approve the change order number one for utility relocation at the interchange.
So moved.
Give us a second. Motion by Alderman Schultz, seconded by Alderman Costello.
I didn't.
Oh, that was John? I'm sorry.
John. I'm just being kind of quiet tonight.
Redo that. Motion by Alderman John Miller, seconded by Alderman Costello to approve the construction change order number one for relocation. Roll call vote?
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz-Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
You're still on.
My next item is change order number two, again, for KCI Construction, again, the formal approval. This change order is for $39,000, and this is for remediation of the soft spots that were found at our new pool park along the internal road that goes north and south. They needed to do some major digging there to get down to earth that was acceptable, and then to put in some culverts in that location. So total for this change order is $39,000.
Are they done with the road? This is the last piece of the road? In terms of hitting big change orders, that's my question. So this kind of eliminates anything in the future, hopefully?
There should not be anything else unless something really unforeseen happens, because they have pretty much finished. Once they complete this, they will be finished with the grading portion of that, and actually guys' crew will then start putting rock onto the road.
Culvert pipe, you're going in now. We'll be done with them by the end of the week, and rock.
Yeah, so there, I mean, you know, there's always something unforeseen out there, but as far as we are aware, there should not be on the road portion anything else of a major amount that would be coming.
Okay, we'll entertain a motion to approve the construction change order number two for poor soil remediation at the park project. So moved. Gary Miller?
I'll second.
Second.
I'll second it.
Motion by Alderman Gary Miller, seconded by Alderman John Miller. Roll call vote?
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz-Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Next, we have approval of Warren County Emergency Services Mutual Aid Agreement.
Yes, this is the same agreement that we have been involved in since 2006. There were no language changes in this agreement, but it was recommended by Mike Daniels. Since there have been changes at both entities in leadership and administration, that we sign a new agreement and renew that. So I'm asking for approval to renew the agreement with Warren County Emergency Management.
What's the point of the agreement? I mean, why do you...
It provides for mutual aid in the case of some kind of emergency. So...
It's the formal understanding of...
Right, and how services would be billed, and, you know, who would be responsible for keeping track of that, all of those types of things.
More questions for Terry?
No.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the Warren County Emergency Services Mutual Aid Agreement.
So moved.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Alderman Costello, seconded by Alderman Schultz. Roll call vote?
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz-Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
My next item for you is just an explanation of ordinances that are later on this evening. We currently do not have anything in our code that specifically addresses mobile food vendors, and they are getting more and more prevalent everywhere these days. So this is a code that defines what a mobile food vendor is, that spells out safety precautions like not impeding traffic and those kinds of things, sets forth hours that they are not allowed to operate so as not to inconvenience residents, and prohibits them from any areas other than commercially zoned areas without prior approval. So really, it just sets some standards for mobile food vendors, because we didn't have anything to address those type of operations. So the first provides that definition, and those specifics, and the second ordinance actually sets the fee for the business license for a mobile food vendor, which is for 30 days, a $40 fee, and for one day, a $15 fee. So this provides a specific business license for those kind of food vendors, since we didn't have anything that really addressed those in our code. So there are ordinances for both of these later on this evening.
Is the fee portion of the ordinance something that's similar to what, obviously it can't be too similar, since we don't have mobile food vendors, but how does that compare to other businesses in the areas that might be getting some kind of license similar to this?
It's very comparable to the categories that we have for like day vendors and 30-day permits for some of those. We added to our code, I don't know, several years ago now, to address like three-day vendors that would sell produce and those kinds of things. So it's very comparable to what those fees would be.
Okay, any other questions? Next will be the town hall meeting.
Yes, Mayor Schluter asked that we schedule a town hall meeting either on July 26th or 27th to invite the public to come to City Hall to get any questions that they might have related to the bond issue that will be on the ballot in August, to get those questions answered. So the question for you this evening is whether the 26th or the 27th of July works for more of you than the other day. He was open on both of those.
I'm open on both.
What, what time did the meeting start?
We really haven't, we didn't discuss that. Typically, we will start it early to catch those people who want to come, so probably 5:00 to 8:00 would be a typical time that we would do something like an open house.
I'm good. What matter to me?
The 26th is better for me than the 27th.
What day of the week is 26?
26th is the only day. Is that, isn't that right, Wednesday and Thursday?
Yes.
I noticed today in the mail, I got my postcard, our educational postcard, talking about the ranges of voting yes to this, because it's a cheaper financing option for the taxpayers. Are we going to do anything other than just this one mailing and these meetings, or do you plan on doing something closer to the time of the vote? Because I think public really needs to understand, it's really advantageous for us to get the best financing rate we possibly can, because it allows us to maybe do a little bit more or have a little bit more breathing in the budget. Probably just will get done either way, but everybody knows if you're going to finance a car or a home, you want the best rate possible, and that's what we're really doing.
Exactly. And we're, we're actually doing, we sent out those on Friday, and then we're doing a half page in the paper this week. Next, within probably the following week, you'll get a larger postcard that'll be full color, that'll be going out, and then we're going to do two more ads in the paper, another half page and a quarter page. We'll have it on Facebook, we are going to have it on the website, all of that.
Terry, actually, the 27th is better for you also.
Is everyone good on the 27th?
All right.
Okay, 27th it is.
I'm embarrassed to say that I was here in 1986 when we passed the bond issue that you're asking the public to vote on now. And is it my understanding that that is the funding from the original pool facility?
Right.
Tax issue?
The funds that will be used to pay the debt service through the bond issue will come from that original sales tax that voters approved for the, the pool that exists today.
And so this is available because there was not a sunset provision on that?
Exactly.
And if you're embarrassed, I'm also embarrassed.
And you were here with me, you were in corporate right along with us.
It was a reason I liked so I could run a second term.
And then the last thing that I have for you is to ask for a work session to see if everyone's available on August 8th, that's a Tuesday, between meetings. We would like to start the work on the downtown initiative. And so the first step in that process is to have the board meet and discuss what your thoughts are on how we want to proceed with that. I think several of you have some thoughts on ways to move forward, but I think one of the big questions is, what is going to be the number one priority? of the big questions is what is going to be the number one priority of our initiative downtown? Is it going to be revitalizing buildings? Is it going to be improving accessibility for handicapped individuals? Is it going to be supplementing property owners with extreme costs that they might have related to revamping a building? So I think before we can really move forward with a plan, we need to know what our desires are for those things that we're going to consider. And that's a work session.
I can tell you that I certainly will not be at that meeting because my baby daughter's getting married in Colorado. I'll be there from the fifth through the twelfth to thirteenth. That isn't necessarily a showstopper because I think as someone who still has ownership of property of the downtown district, I would be uncomfortable setting in on that and making recommendations in that regard. So I don't see any reason why that would stop me from doing that.
Is everyone else available on the eighth?
The eighth, no.
Eighth is fine with me.
Eighth is fine. We also approved to have a company come in and give us some ideas on downtown landscaping or downtown. What's the timing of that versus the timing of this meeting?
I think in this meeting, we need to make some decisions about what our goal is going to be to accomplish so that when we work with an aesthetics company, they know what our vision is.
Okay.
I think after we get a little bit further into this and have a definitive plan, then we can share our plan with a company who can use that as their vision. I think right now, we wouldn't really know what to tell them as far as what our vision is and what we are going to be doing to supplement downtown.
I've had phone calls from a couple downtown business owners who are very interested in being involved in the, and even in the process of what is the aesthetic going to look like? They've expressed concern or comments about us removing trees and why can't you have trees in Central West End, but you can't have trees in Warrenton. You kind of go into this explanation of the type of trees and all these issues we've talked about. So I think as much as we can engage them in the aesthetic part of it will also be helpful. Eventually, we need to have them engaged in our vision of what we see for downtown. But I think even the aesthetic piece, I think would be helpful.
Yeah, I think that you all as a group need to agree somewhat on what our priorities are because we easily could spend ten times the amount of money that we have set aside and not be able to do everything we want to. So I think it's important that we have a vision and then we involve perhaps a committee that pulls in some of those business owners to help us decide how to accomplish what it is that is our vision. But first of all, I think we need to identify what that is and that really means all of you at a work session having that discussion.
Do you think in that discussion, it may be important that maybe a couple of staff be there?
Yes.
As we talk about buildings and structures, you know Brad or Guy would know more or even Jack would know more about issues. So we may go, oh, this is a great idea. And they go, well, here's the problems with the idea.
We will all be here to support him in that. Okay, August eighth, put it on your calendar.
What time?
Are you guys good with six P M.?
Six is fine.
Okay. That's all I have for you this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Terry. Next on the agenda, Gabrielle Curry, Finance Manager.
Good evening. The first item I have for you is the accounts payable. It was approved via email on July fifth, but we need the formal approval. The amount was one million two hundred seventy-seven thousand seven hundred eighty-four dollars and twenty cents.
We entertain a motion to approve our payment. Again, this is a formal approval.
So moved.
I'll second that motion.
Have a question.
Question.
Is there anything insurance related in your list?
I didn't remember seeing it, but.
Don't think I did either.
United Healthcare.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's.
United Healthcare.
Forty thousand Tri-County Agency.
There is?
Yeah, there is a Tri-County for nine hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Okay, I have a motion by Alderman John Miller, seconded by Alderman Schultz to approve accounts payable in the amount of one thousand, one million two hundred seventy-seven thousand seven hundred eighty-four dollars and twenty cents. Roll call vote.
I liked your first motion better.
Yeah, everybody would, wouldn't they? Roll call vote.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
abstaining.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero with one abstention. Okay, Gabrielle, you're still on?
All right, the other item is just the monthly report for the month of May. That's all I have.
Did I see Gabrielle, general sales tax is down?
Yes.
Any, you've probably explained that to the rest of the board earlier in the year? What are you seeing?
Yeah, it is down five percent, which does not include the new sales taxes that were put in place in January. That is not in that number, which those are restricted.
So it's year over year that you're seeing?
It's for the cumulative through May.
And really, we, we started out the year nine, nine percent under. And so it's, it's never really caught up.
That's correct.
But we're better than where we started the year at. So I guess that's.
That nine percent made us a little nervous.
Yeah, that made us extremely nervous.
That first meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll hear from Brandy Walters, Assistant Director of Operations.
Good evening. And the first thing I have is the marketing and business support report from the month of June. We have several, we've had several ribbon cuttings. Thank you guys for all attending those.
Is there a reason that the chamber wasn't at the ribbon cutting?
They usually only go into ones that are, they have members, is what I've been told.
The three we did on Saturday at the, what do you call it now, the shops at Warrenton? I understood that the Mexican restaurant had joined.
That's what I thought too. That's what I've been told that was on their newsletter.
Well, isn't emails a member? I thought they were a member.
Well, that's what we had three of them.
I know, that was a previous one where there was no one. And I thought they were the ones that called for that.
So we need to speak to Michelle, I guess.
Yeah, we can bring it up at their next, the next chamber meeting if I ever have to.
Make sure maybe you got, maybe my email notification.
I'm not sure.
It would seem to me if you want to encourage membership, you could.
No kidding.
To allow our support of you as opposed to that. That's the policy.
Thank you.
Next thing that I have is the monthly admin report for, also for June. We're also still at zero accidents for employees and the month of June, we had four tournaments.
That's good. It was noticeable in town also when they're here.
No.
We have another one this weekend.
Be a hot one.
Yes. Now, is this, is this for the calendar year or is this for fiscal year?
This is for a calendar year.
So we've got the first six months with no accidents, which is great.
The next thing that I have on my list is the items to be approved for sale. The first thing on my list, I have that propane tank. That's just from across the street at, we are mowing that house. That's where that's from.
They're taking a motion for approval to sell a list of equipment.
So moved.
Fair.
Motion by Alderman Schultz, seconded by Alderman Costello. Roll call vote.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
And before we go forward on the next, Alderman Schultz brought up something that we needed to touch on. I don't know if it was going to be discussed or not, but.
Yeah, I meant to bring it up at the, at the Board of Aldermen's comments, but I forgot. We got our citywide garage sale this weekend. I noticed the city staff did a great job once again in putting the signs up. I don't know if you can elaborate when people can get the addresses. Are we still printing those off?
Yes.
Is that's going to be available?
Those will still be available on Thursday.
Thursday.
And I remember last year, a couple of people commented to me that they went down on Saturday morning to get the lists, but there was nobody here. So I don't know if we're going to print extra lists and have them sitting out front or something this year?
We will. We actually have a, it's a, it's a small little box that we put out at the front of the building, out by the sidewalk, right there on Main Street. We put it out there so you can just drive up to it. It has tape one on it. We put it there. So they'll have those.
It'll be a hot one.
And then reduce the temperature to under a hundred and three.
Thank you, Brandy, and thank you, Alderman Schultz, for bringing that up.
The next thing I have on my list is approval for the demolition over on Walton, the house behind here. We are recommending Kelly, Kelly Construction. They have not done stuff for the city in the past, so we are requiring a performance bond for them.
What are they?
From Lebanon?
Lebanon.
Okay, I'll entertain, losing my voice. I'll entertain a motion to approve the demolition bid in the amount of seven thousand dollars to Kelly Construction.
So moved.
I'll second the motion to those better.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Schultz.
Alderman Miller.
Miller.
Oh, it's Gary Miller, I'm sorry.
He wants press. He's still in Walton.
Everything sounds the same coming from you at that end. Anyway, roll call vote.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
And the next thing that I have is the discussion for the solar eclipse. If you guys haven't heard, there's been solar eclipse coming on August the first. We were informed that this is apparently a really big deal.
It is a big deal.
So we would like to open up the athletic complex and open up the restaurants out there so people could have viewing out there. Apparently, there's a big difference. It's like a minute and thirty seconds for it to be totally covered here versus fifty-five seconds in Lake St. Louis. So it's going to be a convenient area. We'd like to put the electronic signs at the exit ramps pointing in that, in that direction.
What card is that going to be? Do they think the eclipse is going to?
It's like around noon.
It's going to, it's going to be at, the totality of it is going to be around one fifteen that afternoon. But the whole thing lasts from around noonish, a little bit before noon until about two forty-five as you watch it go across.
City Hall going to remain open?
It's a Monday.
Moonlight services.
I know that the county buildings have been closed, so we had a half day that day.
Your face is rampant.
That's been very instrumental in that.
You might want to go open up.
Is that all we need of just approval?
I'll make a motion we approved to open.
Do we need a motion, Terry?
Open City Hall?
Closing City Hall is a question.
I don't know what that means. It's open anytime, right?
There's no.
Tents are gaited.
There's no cost. There's no.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda, Lieutenant Larry Eller.
Good evening, Board. I only have one item for you tonight and that's the monthly report.
Standout items?
Also included is a detailed list of the fireworks calls.
I mean, to me, every time I read this, it just reminds me of how drugs are such a critical issue within the city and I'm sure within the county. You know, everything, anything we can do to prove that is just so, so terribly important from a enforcement standpoint, from a safety standpoint. I know I've had vehicles in front of my property, you call the police, they come over and get them for you. Other communities don't do that. They just say, well, dispose of it. Our officers have been coming over and disposing it in a safe manner because it's a great public service that we have time to do that.
I wanted to point something out, Lieutenant. I was talking to one of the state agencies. I won't mention any, but they, they had commended one of your officers, Patrolman James Buckley. I don't know if I'm saying his name right, but he's very professional and he was great, great to work with and he did a real good job.
I'll pass that on to him.
Anything else for Lieutenant Eller? Thank you, sir. Next, we'll hear from Jack Hand, zoning officer and building commissioner.
First item I have is the Building Department Code Enforcement Monthly Report. Pretty consistent. Weeds, trash and vehicles are the top three this time of year.
Weeds and more weeds.
If you don't have any questions, the next item I have is a subdivision record plat approval request, S U B D dash sixty-one. On May the fifth, two thousand seventeen, a request was filed for subdivision record plat approval for the Reether subdivision to be located at ten fifty-six, South Highway forty-seven. Property is zoned ag, agricultural reserve. Motion for approval passed six to zero with four absent at the June first, two thousand seventeen Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on the condition that the applicant dedicate an easement along Highway forty-seven for the installation of a sidewalk, install a sidewalk along Highway forty-seven or pay the required amount for the installation of a sidewalk into the city sidewalk fund. Any representatives here if you have any specific questions for the applicants?
If they would like to come up to the podium.
Now's your, now's your chance.
I'm Randy Lewis and I'm representing the Reether subdivision and the whole reason of doing this was Mr. and Mrs. Reether are wanting to downsize. They want to move into a villa that they have found already and they wanted to sell the improvements off of their thirty-six acre farm. So instead of just writing a legal description for three acres, the right way to do is to make a subdivision plat. And I would like, since nothing is changing on anything and there's an easement along forty-seven, I'd like for the board to waive the sidewalk fund and later date when it does get sold, if any improvements whatsoever are done on either track, lot one or two, that they are forced to pay towards the sidewalk fund or put a sidewalk in. Nothing is changing on the real property at all. It's just taking improvements off the farm and selling the improvements.
Was that same request made to Planning and Zoning? Was that included in there? Six to, six approval of the?
I recall they discussed specifically the issue and decided that the sidewalk fund was inappropriate use for this plan. I don't know that was anybody there at the meeting who argued or made the point that it shouldn't be waived this time.
That's what, the masking did.
I was not at the.
The request was not specifically made, no, sir.
No, I didn't hear anybody come up and say that. You know, I don't know, I can't recall exactly what our policy is. I can understand maybe a hybrid request on here because if you, if you're selling. I can understand maybe a hybrid request on here because if you, if you're selling off a three-acre track and you're not requesting a sidewalk, will that sidewalk ever come in? It won't. Now, it's maybe it's a more reasonable argument on the 33 acres, part of which fronts Highway 47. When that developer buys that and builds it, then he's responsible for that part of the sidewalk. But I don't, if you don't require the three acres to have it, when do you ever get that? Then it ends up being paid for by the general public. And to me, that's kind of how I see the issue, although I can be persuaded somewhere else.
But if they ever make improvements on that three acres, you could ask for the sidewalk?
But what if the person buys it, just leaves it as a home? You've got a, if you have a subdivision develops on the 33, and there's kids who want to walk to the new pool park, and okay, you have a sidewalk in front of that complex, but there's no sidewalk in front of the home, then how do we get the sidewalk there short of making all the residents in the city pay for that sidewalk?
We do have a, we do have a sidewalk.
Yeah, you can come up to the podium.
We do have a sidewalk in front of Harbor House.
Yeah.
Or whatever it's called, which is right next.
And I know there's a subdivision that did not have to put anything in the sidewalk fund and they're on an interstate highway. And I just, you know...
What subdivision was that, when was it?
Last year.
Can I interject? I'm Kim Tarless. I'm the daughter of Oregon Doris. I think there's confusion about the property. That property is not for sale, the 33 acres. We're only selling three acres. So why are we discussing a subdivision, anything? It's not for sale.
But it is a subdivision. It is a provision of...
We didn't like that wording. We want to say lot one, lot two. There is no subdivision. Lot one, lot two. We have no intention... We do not intend to sell.
Then what you've got now is you've got 33 acres. And so the mere fact that you are dividing them, you are, that is, that is the definition of a subdivision.
Okay. But nothing is changing. We are making no changes.
I tend to agree with Gary with the hybrid. The concept that in the event, in the future, you guys do sell the property, like he said, they, they subdivide that, then who's ever going to put the sidewalk in front of the house in three acres?
If we're only talking about the three acres...
And that's what I, that's what I...
You're talking about the 33, that's a whole...
No.
Well, that's, that's one of my points.
Yeah, that, I'm talking about the hybrid.
I think it's more reasonable for whoever buys 33 acres to be responsible for the sidewalk.
The 33 is not for sale.
Well, it will sell eventually, probably. Chances...
You do not know that. I do not know that. And my sister...
I do not know that.
And we have children, we have, we have many...
We're trying to make it easier.
I understand you're trying to make it easier, but I don't want you to make assumptions on the fact that you're, we're going to sell. You give me a very good offer, I might think about it with my back.
There you go. There you go. It tells me you may consider something.
So I, I'm supportive of waiving the sidewalk fee for the 33-acre frontage, but not for the house in three acres because we've got the sidewalks at the, I don't know what...
Harbor House.
Harbor House leading up to that. And as Gary explained, we're trying, we're, we're trying, we've got a couple parcels of land going south as it is that we're trying to get easements for. And if we don't have any sort of teeth to get the easements, we won't be able to get them in the future, so...
I just, if this happens, you're going to dead-end a sidewalk that leads to nowhere.
But the Harbor House deadends at your property, correct?
And you're, the further you get south, it's going to dead-end. The next house past us is county. It's not city.
Mount.
No.
It is Mount.
And you'll have a hard time getting that one in the city.
Well, you said about the...
The next one down, our neighbor is past. You are encouraging children, you're encouraging people to continue to walk, to ride a bike. Further down South 47, I can tell you it's not the most safe corner. There are many, many accidents. My parents have been through it. We lost my sister on that corner. It is not conducive to having, encouraging. I think it should be a liability on your part to encourage to build a sidewalk that leads to nowhere.
Well, I think the goal is eventually it's going to lead to somewhere because that's what we work on is trying to, if we have a gap in the sidewalk, trying to work with the property owner to get an easement so we can put sidewalks in so we don't have people jutting on the street. I can't tell you how many times I get phone calls from people who are concerned to death on the north side of North 47 about no sidewalks at all. They would probably be happy if there was at least stopgap sidewalks in there so a person could get off. So, I mean, to me, yeah, every time we do a new subdivision or a new property and it's in the middle of undeveloped properties, it's always like, well, the city's making us build a sidewalk, and what's the point? Well, eventually, there will be a point. And that's, we have to look farther out than just a year or two.
You really don't have to go to North 47 to see the exact situation that Alderman Ock was talking about. If you go to my friend Jack Nevin's duplex, which is at Whispering Pine and 47, there's not a sidewalk there, and there shouldn't be a sidewalk there. And we've had that discussion. So to not, to not, if that had been extended as it should have been back when that was built, there wouldn't be kids walking on wet grass and walking where they shouldn't be. Same is true with the old firehouse or two, there's two homes to the south of the firehouse that there are not sidewalk extensions there. So the argument, the sidewalk to nowhere, if you've sat here as long as we have, there will be another sidewalk on the other side of that.
Can I ask when did this...
If we ignore that, we're not doing our job.
Ordinance go into effect?
When did it go into?
I want to back up a little bit because I think there's some confusion about the process here. When you do a subdivision in the city, essentially, it's almost an administrative approval if you meet the statutory or the ordinance requirements. The ordinance, since I've been involved with the city, which is 14, 15 years, has always required when there's a subdivision of land, either sidewalks to be installed, if it's an existing street on both sides of the streets, or if it's a non-existing street on one side of the street. This is on 47, it's an existing street. There, the, essentially, it's a prerequisite that you install the sidewalks in order to subdivide the land in the city of Warren. And that's the way it's always been, okay? And Randy, I don't know what specific one you're talking about with regards to a subdivision that occurred that didn't have a cash payment or whatnot. This came up because it was not initially addressed by the city to the applicant to say, what are you going to do about the sidewalks? And it was not initially shown on the plans. Came up at Planning and Zoning, one of the commissioners said, hey, where's the sidewalk? We haven't had a lot of subdivisions in the last couple of years. I mean, that's not been something that's been prevalent. This is a subdivision under our, under our subdivision ordinance. It is required to have a sidewalk installed along the area that fronts the roadway. There's only one road that's there, is Highway 47. In lieu of, under our ordinance, in lieu of the sidewalks being installed by the owner of the property as a condition of prerequisite of the approval of the subdivision, there can be an alternative cash payment that is made. The idea of the dedicated easement was something that we came up with at the meeting so that if, in this particular situation where there may be practical considerations to not have all or a portion of the sidewalk installed right away, we're not at a later date required to go and try to locate the easement. So it, it's, it's not really, it's set by ordinance, it's required by ordinance. It's been a part of the subdivision ordinance for years and years. Now, we haven't had a lot of subdivisions except smaller subdivisions like this in a while, but it's always been required under our ordinance that a subdivision install the sidewalks as part of it. And that's common amongst most municipalities in the state of Missouri in their subdivision ordinance that they require a sidewalk to be put in. And, and my thing is, my suggestion would be, I don't think under the ordinance, you guys have granted yourself the authority to waive a cash payment. I think what we've done in the past is you've reduced the cash payment to a particular amount. So the estimated amount is $8,000. You guys have said, well, we'll only make you pay a dollar or some nominal amount. You guys actually have never waived it as far as I've seen. It's only been reducing the amount because it does, the ordinance does require an, either the sidewalks be installed or an alternative cash payment.
And then in this case, the full length was 13?
The total amount?
The total was 13.
13,000.
And my proposal was we, we reduce it to, what was the, just the length of the three acres?
5,720.
5,000. So it's a, it's a significant reduction. I mean, it's not significant.
So can I, can I ask the wording of your letter that was sent by Jack? It's kind of odd to us. A required sidewalk fund donation. Well, why are you calling it a donation? I don't, okay, if, I don't want to donate. We don't want to donate. What, where is this wording? It seems a bit odd.
It's exactly from this section of code, municipal code ordinance, is what they call, what it's called.
If possible, I...
And I believe I even included the actual section of code, too.
If, I've got a son that's waiting on me back in St. Louis, but I'd like to see a copy of the ordinance if I could.
You should have a copy that's attached to the letter. Should be the next page.
I thought I sent you the sidewalk section of code along with the letter from the Director of Public Works with the pricing.
The letter dated...
Oh, I have, you just sent me the letter. Okay, I didn't get that. I just got it.
This is my letter, I see attached section. I think it's...
Section 410, point four.
And the date would be on there as well?
Yes, ma'am.
It was originally adopted in 2000, or 1981 was the original adoption date of the sidewalk ordinance.
That's what I was thinking. Okay. Anything else we can add?
Can I ask a question, Chris? So in, in the code, it says that they, they can install them as long as it's up to code.
I'm just asking. Yeah, I mean, it's, obviously, we, you know, we have certain statutory requirements for installing it. We give them that option because they typically can install it much cheaper than we can, you know? They typically, I mean, that's our experience is, most developers like to install themselves because the labor's much cheaper than the city has to pay for. But it is required under the ordinance, I want to make that clear. The sidewalk to be installed is required only the board, and that's always been the case with Planning and Zoning, they've only recommended alternatives because the ordinance specifically says only the Board of Aldermen can accept a cash payment equivalent in lieu of it. And like I said, I just don't want to get into the habit of waiving it because that's not something you guys have ever done before. I think it's a determination of the amount or a reasonable amount with the cash payment.
So I, from my hearing, I think the board is open to going with the lower amount that only represents the three. However, that doesn't mean you don't have an option of saying, well, I could shoot, I could put that in, under, properly put it in under 5,000, that would be a cheaper option. So that's another thing to look at. So if there's, if somebody comes along and says, well, I'll run this stretch of sidewalk according to city code, I can do it for three, well, obviously, that's the cheaper option than the five.
And it might increase the property value for yourself, right?
And I would request, if you're considering the cash option, and I would ask this of you guys, or you're considering a low option. Randy, I talked to you a little bit about before the meeting of adding on your subdivision plat a dedicated sidewalk easement. Is that an issue for you guys at all?
Spelling it out, 20-foot easement doesn't cover it?
No, because it's just utility. It's not a sidewalk easement.
Well, doesn't really say. Okay. We can spell that out.
Yeah. Because I, the biggest thing for me is my ultimate concern, whatever you guys decide that's within your discretion, I just want to make sure we have an easement. Because, for example, somebody could, Greg, you could buy that lot and put a home on that 20-something, 32 acres? Is that what would remain? 33 acres, you could put a home on, on what remains. And there would never be an obligation for them to put a sidewalk in. But at least we would have the easement that we could construct a sidewalk at some point.
And, you know, we've got that very situation on these street markets. I know we don't have the easements. We really do need sidewalks. I'm really short of getting, paying a substantial payment for the easement. We have condemnation, and that also requires ultimately a payment.
And that's expensive, and it's time consuming.
So in addition to the easement, if I'm getting this right, in addition to an easement for the whole thing?
Yeah, we can make it part of that.
So we're giving you the easement for the sidewalk. You also want us to pay for the sidewalk?
Correct.
But that's in lieu of installing the sidewalk, which is, the ordinance requires you to install the sidewalk if you subdivide land. There's an option to grant you relief, which is what you're requesting that says, can we do a cash payment instead of installing the sidewalk ourselves? And so that's the option that's there. And so my position is if they're considering the alternative option, I'm asking that you guys to dedicate the sidewalk easement itself. I think Randy originally thought it was dedicated on the utility easement, but it does not spell out sidewalks.
But again, we're still talking only about the three acres of the sidewalk installation. The other 32 to 33 is just the easement of the sidewalk. Is that, are we still on that?
Right. There'll be a dedicated easement all along 47 on lot one and two. But we're just, the way you've been explaining it, that we're just responsible for doing the three.
I just want to emphasize, because we're only talking about the installation of the sidewalk of the three-acre plat.
Yes, sir.
Not required the entire length.
Yes, sir.
But the easement is on the entire. The easement is on the entire length.
Yeah, and I think the public needs to understand, one of the reasons on North 47, it's like, well, why don't you just go out and do it? Well, you know, if you don't have the easements in place, we just can't enter into private property and start laying sidewalks in the interest of public safety. It's a long and drawn-out process to try to give, to get easements put on property once, once those easements don't exist. So that part's really critical. And it could delay, if we wanted to do something on North 47, it could delay that project for many, many years if we started to put money on it just from a time perspective.
And when MODATs allowed us to, we've worked with them to work within their right of way. But that has changed from time to time.
If, if this were property, my parents decided not to buy on South 47, but they bought off of Warrior Ridge or back, would we be having this discussion?
Probably not because the developer of who subdivided the property that they buy already was required to do that.
60 years ago when they bought?
Well, I don't know what, you have to give me specific property.
That's what I'm saying. I feel like my parents are, they've worked hard their whole life just by the placement of where they bought their property. Now they have to build a sidewalk. I feel a little bit like you're not going to make them do that if it was not on South 47.
No, that has nothing to do with it.
Your ordinance requires it on any subdivision of land.
So you would do that?
Yes.
The reverse argument, Kim, is that, that the location of their property, where it is, with city water, city sewer, and city services, literally causes it to inflate the price. And Randy, I think, would echo that, that it's location, location, location.
But I don't know if that matters to my dad or my mom. You know, honestly.
I've been on your parents for a very long time. And I, and anyone that sits at this dais is not trying to pick on your mom and dad. We love them very much. We also understand that it's hard. I turned 69 last month, so I understand that people get tired of dealing with these details. They want life to be simple, unfortunately.
And we were trying to make this a simple move for them. This is what it was all about.
I think Alderman Ock's suggestion is a fair one, is a good one, and it kind of does give some, it does give some consideration.
I appreciate that.
We're trying, we're trying to find the best solution for both sides. I mean, we can't, and still stay...
Yes, I do appreciate that. I'm new to all this. We just wanted to make their life easier, so without, I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming around.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The question I have to finish this subject. Do we need to have a...
Okay, we'll have to change it now.
Motion recommendation, or do we need a...
Yeah, we did not put the bill on because we were unsure of exactly how the board was going to handle this with regards to the sidewalks, so we didn't have...
So Alderman Ock, to make a motion to, to direct the Planning and Zoning officer to calculate this based on just the frontage that's on the three acres, then that would come back up again next.
You've already got that information in your packet. For just, for lot one, it's 279.03 feet, and it would be $5,720.12. For lot two is 390.83 feet, and it would be $8,012.12. If you do them both, it's a grand total of $13,732.13. So we have, we have the numbers.
Okay.
Well, we have the numbers, but again, this is where, but we talked about two different things, all right? We have the numbers there, and I think we're all in agreement to minimize and just put the sidewalk in on...
the sidewalk in on where the house is and leave the other property alone. But on the drawing, now we're talking, there's an easement there, but there's no sidewalk easement. Now, again, we're just trying to make this all simple. Can we vote on this tonight, and everybody, and it's, and it's all good?
No, because the bill needs to be run twice.
Okay, well, that's what I want to be clear, because we're all, I think we're all in agreement that to do the minimal on the sidewalk and leave the bigger piece of property alone, other than the sidewalk easement.
And I would suggest that it would be possible that if, you know, because it will go in the next meeting for an ordinance, that they may be able to, Randy, obtain a quote to see if you could do the sidewalks cheaper than the five-thousand-dollar cash payment, if that's what they decide, you may be able to get it done first round.
Let me make a motion, let's just see where we go on this, okay? So, I make a motion that we would require the developer or the property owner to place an easement, sidewalk easement along Highway Forty-seven for the total track of the three acres plus the thirty-three acres. And second part of the motion would be that the property owner would be required to pay either into the sidewalk fund, the dollar amount is calculated as for the three acres, or in lieu of that, put the sidewalk in themselves. That's my motion.
I'll second that motion. That's good, Chris?
Yeah, I think that's perfect.
Yeah, Gary Miller said that. I did. Mike.
Okay. You're going to have to read that motion back, because I couldn't write that fast.
She can read it back.
You don't need to, that's why we got Melody.
That's why we got Melody.
All right.
Melody, did you read the motion back?
Um, to add a sidewalk easement along Highway Forty-seven, which is along lots one and two, and then on the plat, and then to also include in the ordinance that there would be on the three acres only, or lot one, either pay into the sidewalk fund five thousand, seven hundred, twenty dollars and twelve cents, or to install the sidewalk for the three acres or lot one.
Okay. We have a motion-
And it's been seconded.
By Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Schultz. Okay, so roll call vote.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Absolutely.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shel Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Okay.
Next item is the Warren County Fitness Center, SP 116 approval request, the sidewalk, or the site plan approval request for the Warren County Fitness Center to be located at thirty-nine twenty North Highway Forty-seven. And they're planning show sidewalks all the way around.
I have, I have one comment on that, and that there's no argument on the sidewalks.
You're trying to- Thank you, Commissioner Hems.
You're trying to be smart.
Do you need a motion to approve it?
Well, it was a bill later.
No, that's a bill later on.
Yeah, but the reality is, is we only look at this from the perspective of public safety, because county, what they do on the interior, how they change the building, really isn't something the city council can control or change, but already in the aspect that if we determine that it's not a public safety issue, that's where we step in here, so-
No zoning issues.
There's no zoning issues, so we can deal with it relative to this anyway.
Okay.
So, is this finished, then? Is there no arguments?
There's an ordinance later.
We're in a vote on here, yes.
Yeah, if you want to stay, you can, but.
I think it's going to be okay. I'm a man of the year, so I'm just fine.
He's being entertained.
Jack, that's everything from you.
That's it, sir. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is Brad Boosie Cruz, Maintenance and Ground Director.
Good evening. You have my monthly report. No questions, we'll move on to the next one. Is the subdi, or the policy for flat stones, and it's, I guess it's adding number nine to the policy, cemetery policy, where the grounds of maintenance will install flat stone markers that are grass level, maximum size of twenty-eight by sixteen by four, with a maximum weight of a hundred and sixty pounds, and the stones must be delivered to the cemetery for inspection, and this will, the department will install them for a fee of a hundred and fifty dollars, and this will include all rock digging and setting.
Is there a reason why the city-
There's a lot of people now that are wanting to buy stones online-
Okay.
-and bringing them up, and nobody to set them, and-
As opposed to a monument company?
Yeah, it's more, more, we're finding more and more people are building their own, buying their own, and then wanting them set.
Yeah, I raised this issue a few months ago with Terry. We had an individual that we worked with in our, in one of our ministries who was destitute, passed away, and, and trying to figure out, you know, how to handle this, one alternative they came up with was a lot of people do shop online, and they acquire stones, and then the question becomes, well, how do you get that stone installed? The city really didn't have a mechanism. So, I think it helps us, from a marketing standpoint, to kind of step our policy up to what goes on in the, in the current environment where people are doing that as an alternative to going to a monument company and purchasing. And talked about, we didn't want to do big, heavy stones, something that's non-flat, because obviously that requires special equipment, if there's a lot more risk and safety issues for the worker, but flat stones seem to be something with a more reasonable approach. I thank Terry for working on that, because it's just what go on now, that's what you do.
It was an eye-opening experience. First of all, I had no idea you could buy a stone online, and in looking at that, had no idea you could also buy caskets online from Walmart dot com.
No.
I was astounded.
I didn't know that.
No. He gets a box.
It's not just a cardboard box from the back room?
Uh, this is a step up.
It's a cardboard box that says Xena TV, extra-large size on it. They spray paint that out and put your name on it.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the change, revised cemetery guidelines to include installation of flat stones.
So moved.
Second. Who, Gary Miller?
No, that was me this time.
That was you this time? I'll get it right one of these times.
Yes, too many Millers, I'm too many Garrys.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Costello.
That's the bid you created when you were there.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shel Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
And Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Guy Jeevers, Public Works Director.
Good evening. First item I have is the monthly report. We got some stormwater put in at Powell and Neen House. Finished up the asphalt work off of Hickory Leg. We had some sidewalk repairs on Isabella, South Forty-seven, East Veterans Memorial Parkway. We had a total of four store backups, two were on the private and two were on the city. And we did about five thousand, eight hundred and seventy feet of monthly flushing.
So, are those bores under the railroad track, are they done now?
The-
They went up by Milltown Road was one of them?
That is not.
That is not started yet?
We're waiting, we have it. The railroad wanted more information on the insurance from the contractor. We have that, we got to go, had to go, wait for the contractor to come through and start that project. But they had to go, and that shouldn't really take too long, because they're going to come off the Pinkley side and come through, so there won't be a whole lot of mess in the street, it'll be on the other side of the railroad. Any other questions?
Keep moving.
Next item I have is a proposal for the box culvert located in the wastewater treatment plant from Understall Construction for a hundred and thirty thousand. Budget amount was a hundred and ninety thousand. We are going to have an additional cost in rock of right around forty thousand. Understall's the one that's doing the sewer lines, their equipment's on site, that's why it came in, a little lower than we planned. So, I need approval for that.
Okay, I'll ask for-
And this is replacing a low-water bridge, which-
Right.
-when it rains, we can't get through, we got to come in on emergency access, and that's not really, you can't get a truck there just for a pickup.
You said forty thousand, you said their bid is a hundred and thirty thousand, forty thousand, then?
It's going to be for rock, because we got to get-
Is that coming out of-
-rock to bridge, and then into the wastewater treatment plant.
And you've got that budget-
That's part of the forty, that was part of the original bid of a hundred and ninety thousand, forty thousand, picking up the one thirty.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the awarding of the box culvert.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman John Miller, seconded by Alderman Ock. Right?
Yes.
You got it.
Very good.
You're on it, bud.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shel Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
Next item I have is the mobile office. This is to replace the office down at the wastewater treatment plant that's deteriorating and need to be replaced. The low bid was Modern Space at twenty-two thousand, six, six, four. Budget amount was twenty-three thousand, seven hundred, and this is where their break room and where they eat dinner, have their lunch, and that is, they can't eat lunch in the lab, they got to eat at a different location.
So, your recommendation is the low bid?
For low bid, that's correct.
Motion to approve the recommendation of the Public Works Director for the purchase of a modular building from Modular Space at Charles, Missouri, at twenty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Second.
I have a motion by Alderman Costello, seconded by John Miller, to approve the, or award the office bid to Modular Space. Roll call vote.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shel Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Next item I have is adding ordinance to the use of public sewer.
This is for, if a contractor, or company comes in and going to do, for an example, with Tyson Food, the wastewater has to be treated. This ordinance is, so if our engineers look at it, we can get reimbursed on our engineering costs.
For a pretreatment plant?
Yes. And, and to get to a set price, we can't really do it by square foot, we're going to have to do it by what the product is, and if it's, they make small packaging plants that come out in trucks, but then if they get into a full-blown wastewater treatment plant like Coca-Cola, then it's going to be completely different. So, they will give us a cost estimate of what the plan is, they receive the plans, and then a cost estimate of what it's going to be off of that. So, I need approval for that.
And that'll be later. It's later in the bill. Bill's ordinance, so. Okay.
That's all I have.
I would just like to say, on behalf of the tribute to the Veterans Memorial Building Committee, what an incredibly awesome job the city maintenance staff has done in supporting that project, both in the installation of the stormwater piping tree removal back in April, before we had to do a math survey. Just, I cannot say enough about how good it's been. Our group has just been amazed at, at how talented the city staff is and how they've got on the job and got it done. And I want to tell you that they're duly impressed with the, the old crew, the Mark Watsons and the Wayne Dickmans, who are actually part of Brad's crew, who were out there early on, both removing the trees and chipping them and getting them off-site. It's been an incredible project, and I am honored to be a part of it. I just want to personally thank the staff, and if you'll pass that on, we appreciate it.
I will pass it on, and I'm tickled to death on the work that we, the work that we have, we are very lucky.
Okay. Thank you, Guy. Next, we'll hear from City Clerk Melanie Rue about parking on Southwest Street.
Bill number fifty-five dash seventeen creates a loading zone for deliveries at City Hall. This area is located on Southwest Street on the west side, it's in front of the door, or what used to be the front door for the existing City Hall. There's a little area where the peaking wheel is dolly up, so it's just creating that space where nobody can park there, so what we do to get deliveries from FedEx and UPS, we don't have to, he's not hitting any vehicles or anything like that.
Okay. And also will be a bill of ordinance later on. Okay, ask for a five-minute recess. Okay, we get now to bills to ordinance.
I'd like to introduce bill number fifty-dash seventeen for the first reading.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Costello, seconded by Alderman Ock, for first reading.
An ordinance amending section seven zero zero point one-two-zero of the municipal code of the city of Warrenton, Missouri, establishing rates for sewer service within and outside the corporate limits of the city of Warrenton.
I'll entertain a motion for second reading and passage of bill number fifty-dash seventeen.
So moved. Let's hear it, let's hear it. We're all getting tired. We're ready to go. We're ready to go, right? Let's go.
It was definitely Gary.
Yeah, it was Gary.
Write some names down.
Motion by Alderman Schultz, seconded by Alderman Gary Miller.
An ordinance amending section seven zero zero point one-two-zero of the municipal code of the city of Warrenton, Missouri, establishing rates for sewer service within and outside corporate limits of the city of Warrenton.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Shel Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Motion for the introduction, first reading.
Motion carries six to zero.
Go for it.
We, you need Alder, Mayor Shaw is here.
Yeah, we could whip through these things.
Introduction of bill number fifty-one seventeen for the first reading and introduction.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Costello, seconded by Alderman Ock.
An ordinance amending section seven zero five point two-one-zero of the municipal code of the city of Warrenton, Missouri, establishing rates for the use and consumption of water within and outside the corporate limits of the city of Warrenton.
So moved.
Introduce for second reading.
Call for second, second reading and passage of bill number fifty-one dash seventeen.
So moved.
So moved. Motion by Alderman Gary Miller, seconded by John Miller.
An ordinance amending section seven zero five point two-one-zero of the municipal code of the city of Warrenton, Missouri, establishing rates for the use and consumption of water within and outside the corporate limits of the city of Warrenton.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Shel Harvey?
Yes.
Motion for the introduction.
Six to zero. Call for, uh, introduction of bill number 52-17.
So moved. Second.
An ordinance amending section 700.050 subsection E4 of the municipal code of the city of Warren, Missouri relating to industrial pre-treatment engineering charge.
Call for second reading and passage of bill number 52-17.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman John Miller, seconded by Alderman Ock.
An ordinance amending section 700.050 subsection E4 of the municipal code of the city of Warren, Missouri relating to industrial pre-treatment engineering charge.
Roll call vote?
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shel Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Introduction of bill number 53-17.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman John Miller, seconded by Alderman Costello.
An ordinance adding a new chapter 607 to the municipal code of the city of Warren, Missouri pertaining to mobile food vendors.
Call for second reading and passage of bill number 53-17.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Schultz, seconded by Alderman Ock.
An ordinance adding a new chapter 607 to the municipal code of the city of Warren, Missouri pertaining to mobile food vendors.
Roll call vote?
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shel Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Introduction of bill number 54-17.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Gary Miller.
An ordinance amending section 605.020 titled Fee of the Municipal Code of the City of Warren, Missouri relating to the setting of a fee for a mobile food vendor permit.
Call for second reading and passage of bill number 54-17.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman John Miller, seconded by Alderman Ock.
An ordinance amending section 605.020 titled Fee of the Municipal Code of the City of Warren, Missouri relating to the setting of a fee for a mobile food vendor permit.
Roll call vote?
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shel Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Call, uh, call for introduction of bill number 55-17.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Schultz.
An ordinance amending schedule three prohibited parking of Title III traffic code in accordance with section 365.030 by prohibiting a six-foot wide area on the west side of Southwest Street in front of the exit door.
Call for second reading and passage of bill number 55-17.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Schultz, seconded by, wait, was it, I'm sorry, John Miller, seconded by Alderman Ock.
An ordinance amending schedule three prohibited parking of Title III traffic code in accordance with section 365.030 by prohibiting a six-foot wide area on the west side of Southwest Street in front of the exit door.
Roll call vote?
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shel Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Introduction of bill number 56-17.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Costello.
An ordinance is authorized under section 405.390 of the municipal code of the city of Warren, Missouri approving a site plan for Warren County Fitness Center located at 3920 North Highway 47.
Call for second reading and passage of bill number 56-17.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by John Miller, seconded by Alderman Schultz.
An ordinance is authorized under section 405.390 of the municipal code of the city of Warren, Missouri approving a site plan for Warren County Fitness Center located at 3920 North Highway 47.
Roll call vote?
Alderman Shel Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Introduction of bill number 57-17.
So moved.
Second.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Alderman Ock.
Alderman Ock. Motion to Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Costello.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Second, John Miller.
Alderman Costello, okay. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a deed to vacate the southern portion of Pickney Road between Missouri State Highway U and Millbrook subdivision.
Call for second reading and passage of bill number 57-17.
So moved.
So, second.
Motion by Alderman John Miller, seconded by Alderman Schultz.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a deed to vacate the southern portion of Pickney Road between Missouri State Highway U and Millbrook subdivision.
I have a question. This is in regard to South...
This is the, the old, the old bridge and...
Right, right. And I fully support that. I do think it will be important, you know, we talked about sidewalks this evening, and, and certainly we have more from state months with people, we need more sidewalks and less. But there is an issue of overburden and dirt that needs to be removed off of the Keven property, and, and we'll have to ascertain how that's gonna happen. That is my concern. At the last meeting, there was no agreement for that to be removed. It would be interesting to have a Public Works Director come back and tell us how much overburden you think would need to be removed, and how we might accomplish that.
Straight on Highway...
Highway U?
Has he, did he give us the easement on that?
Yes.
So we do have the easement, so if we could do something to make that sidewalk happen, because I know that was a big concern for a number of people, that may be something we might want to take out of the sidewalk fund, you know, like we talked about deposits, and do that project.
But I think in the future, the board needs to be careful when you give directions to, to Terry, to go out and make something happen, and we need to make sure that we understand that, that that property owner, even though they give you an easement, doesn't have to remove or get, get the area ready to receive sidewalks, and there's a considerable amount of dirt on that, right on the corner of Highway U and, and Main Street. And I think this is a good move in, in closing this, because like, it's, I talk about a dangerous street. This is one, where you turn left off of South Pickney onto, onto Highway U, you're taking your life in your hands. So I support this, but I think that we need to connect the dots to see how we're gonna make the sidewalks happen.
So when we close this street, what happens to the bridge? Does that now become Keven's property? Because he's got property on both sides, and we're closing, and we're shutting it down, so if he comes back and says, well, what about this bridge, or how does that work? Is it just, we'll play it by ear?
It's part of the sidewalk.
That's what I understood, is a bridge is...
Whatever is there, well, now, we are retaining an easement.
Okay.
Uh, because there's utility lines there.
But just the utility easement, not an easement for the bridge. So he's taking it basically as his.
So he's taking the, the whole property with the bridge there, and if that needs to be removed for development purposes, it's his bridge now?
Well, as I understood it, I think Alderman Schultz is probably correct in that you need some type of bridge there to extend the sidewalk to the south. That's a pretty good-sized creek there.
A cold as a bridge.
But I don't want to hold this discussion up, but I, but I do think that we just need to make sure when we, when this body gives our staff marching artists to go do something, and I think she did, and then we had opposition from, from citizens, and I understand their concerns, that we make sure who's gonna, who's gonna take care of some of those issues, because, as I said, there's a, I think I can agree, there's a considerable amount of dirt that would have to be removed, and then to either hold, hold the soil there, because I didn't hear anything from Mr. Keven that said he was gonna immediately, even if we closed Celia, that he was gonna remove that dirt, and I think that, that's part of the consideration that we have to think about.
Mr. Keven had committed to leveling all those lots if we closed that entire street.
Was that in writing?
But we threw the, well, no, but we could, I mean, he would have done that if we'd asked him to. But the kink came when we did not close Celia, and now that could not be pushed down the hill. So it sort of left us in limbo.
So this gets it to the easement, but we've got still some.
Do we, we currently have the 10-foot easement?
Yes.
Yeah.
But do you have a great easement?
On the piece from Celia south, not from Celia north.
You still have to work on it.
Roll call vote? I think that, well, before you, I was not, this was the meeting that I missed, and I think we, I lost internet connection before I got, like, I, I think we need, we talked about this back in January at our planning meeting about getting that sidewalk, that was a priority to get it done. So I think moving forward, we need to still work with Mr. Keven about what we can do with that, no, property north of Celia and getting that. So we still, like you said, we still need to work on that, too, so to keep moving, whether ends up closing Celia or something, there's gonna have to be some kind of decision made on that, I think. Anyway, okay, roll call vote?
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Absolutely.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shel Harvey?
Yes. Motion passes six to zero.
Motion for adjournment.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, right?
Yes.
You guys sound too much alike down there. Seconded by Alderman Costello for adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?